From the southeastern corner of western North Carolina, this is Polk Lore. I'm your host, James Hernishen. Three seats on the Pope County Board of Commissioners expire this year. All three are currently held by Republicans and all three of them are running for reelection. Only two Democrats are in the race, so there's no chance that Democrats will achieve control of the board. It wasn't so long ago that they did have control, however, so it's entirely conceivable that the next board could be quite a bit different from the outgoing one. Or it could be exactly the same. In the previous episode of Polk Lore, I talked with Ray Gasperson, one of the two Democratic challengers. In this episode, I talk with the other, Andy Millard. Before I introduce Andy, though, I should probably explain why they are the only two candidates who I expect to appear on this podcast. I asked all five to sit for an interview. Andy and Ray both agreed without hesitation. That shouldn't surprise anyone. We all know each other well. As Ray's a former commissioner, Andy used to run the Pope County Democratic Party, and I used to serve as a saluted chair for the same organization. That might also explain why Tommy Melton, Paul Beiler, and David Moore all declined to accept my invitation. To be fair, each offered entirely different reasons. Tommy Melton said he wasn't confident a podcast conversation would offer the clarity and accuracy required to explain his positions. Paul Beiler said he was not in the right frame of mind due to some nightmarish bureaucratic problems he's having with the State Department. And David Moore said he didn't think enough people listened to this podcast to make it worthwhile. For the record, Polk Lore has attracted more than 270 listeners so far. All three offered to supply written responses to my questions, but I don't think that reading those responses without a chance to explore the ideas they raise would work well on a podcast. And it wouldn't be fair to those who did agree to sit down for a chat. I hope the holdouts changed their minds after listening to this episode, but I understand why that's probably not going to happen. Now, back to Andy Millard. He's a financial planner, a former high school principal, Pope County High's first, actually, and has a long history of political activism in Pope County. He even ran for Congress a few years ago, biking around the entire district. We talked at his home in Columbus earlier this month. Andy Millard, thanks for joining the podcast.
Thank you, James Hernishen. I'm happy to be here.
So let's start right away with you giving me a little bit of understanding about who you are and why you want to be on the Board of Commissioners.
Well, I have been a Pope Countyan for the last 30 years. I was the first principal of Pope County High School when it first was opened in 1992. Prior to that, there were two school systems in Pope County: the Tryon School System and the Pope County School System. So Tryon High School, Pope County High School. They merged the two together into one high school, Pope County High School. And the summer before that school opened, I got a call, I was in Gastonia, North Carolina, as an assistant principal at a high school there, and said, "You had previously applied as a principal here in Pope County. Well, we got a school that we think you would be a good fit at. Why don't you come and do this?" And this was like, I started like, less than a month before the school opened, on the first day of school. So it was, it was kind of thrown right into there, but I did not hesitate. We were so happy to move to Pope County. Myself, my wife Sharon, our three-year-old son, and so that was the start. I also have been a business owner for 25-plus years. I left the school system after a few years, just moved on to business. And I've been a volunteer. I was the chair of the Blue Ridge Barbecue Festival for eight years, for people who remember the Blue Ridge Barbecue Festival. In fact, in my financial planning investment management business, I got more clients from the Blue Ridge Barbecue Festival than from anything else, because at some point, I, we had really, really bad traffic before I became chair. And then I said, you know, "The traffic is backed up to Hendersonville during this festival." So I spent the next year kind of reworking the traffic and parking patterns, and it made it everybody's life a lot easier who attended the barbecue festival. And so people said, "Hmm, well, that guy did a pretty good job with the parking at the barbecue festival. Maybe he can manage my investments." So, so that's how I picked up a lot of my clients. But, and I'm in the Kiwanis Club, I'm in the Chamber of Commerce Hall of Fame here, the Foothills Chamber of Commerce. So I've been involved as a volunteer in a lot of things. And part of my business, actually, it wasn't part of my business at all, it's just that I renovated the Tryon Depot in downtown Tryon. It had been sitting vacant for a long time, and it was really in bad shape. And so I moved my office into there, and there's a big room that they used to store freight in. And we would have programs in there, and we've had, we had a few programs in there where I would host World War II veterans. And we'd either show them a movie, or, but one time, we just had them in there for a luncheon and invited the public, and they shared their memories of World War II, and particularly of D-Day for those who were involved in that. And it was, it was just packed. People just couldn't get enough of that. So those are the kinds of things that I've done in the community, and I want to continue that as a county commissioner. I think there are a lot of things that, that we need to do as a county, as a community. There've been so many things that have kind of pulled us apart, and I want us to be able to say, you know, those, those things that are outside of, of our community, that are in politics nationally and that sort of thing, we can set those aside, because we've got issues here in Pope County that we need to deal with. And it shouldn't matter what side of the political party spectrum you're on. We've got things in Pope County that have nothing to do with national issues that we just need to deal with. And I think, I think I'm in a good position to be able to affect positive change in that way.
You spent a fair bit of time with the Democratic Party, and you ran as a Democratic candidate for Congress.
Yeah.
A few years ago. You must have learned a fair bit about campaigning in this part of the world.
I did. I did. I was the Democratic nominee for the 10th congressional district. That's the district that Patrick McHenry was, the representative is, and he still is. And that was in the 2016 cycle. That's the year that Donald Trump got elected president. Actually, I sold my business in order to devote full time to that campaign. And I'm considered more of a, kind of a centrist type of Democrat. And during that time, it was, again, my theme there was kind of what I, I called, we called it "running for a better Congress." So it, that was a whole different level. There were, at that time, seven counties in the congressional district, went all the way from Pope County to Gastonia, up to Catawba County and Hickory, all the way over to Asheville. And so, a year before the election, I actually went out and walked the entire, actually ran and bicycled the entire congressional district, 350 miles, six weeks, and met tons of people. It was just so incredible. And those types of, that type of campaigning, I mean, you're not fighting these culture war issues. You're not yelling at each other about terrible, or these, you know, cultural divisive issues. They're common issues that everybody has, that you talk about in that, in that type of a campaign. And it was just great. I did learn a lot about campaigning. I learned a lot about politics. I learned a lot about party politics as well.
And that was the first time you'd run for public office?
First time I'd run for anything, yep.
And in between that and now, you have been chair of the Democratic Party here?
I was the chair of the Democratic Party for several years, yeah. Basically, we were losing our chair, and they were, they asked me to do that, and I was happy to do it.
All right. So if you're elected, what do you want to do on the board?
I feel like what we need to do, and I don't want to, I don't want to say anything that is negative toward the current commissioners. I think anybody who steps up and runs and agrees to serve their community in the way that these guys are doing it, definitely deserves praise and appreciation, and not a lot of bashing. I do think we can do better in the areas of particularly looking ahead, planning ahead. And I think what we need to do is we need to look at, examine who we are as a community, as a county. What do we want our county to look like five, 10 years down the road? And this Highway 9 situation that's big controversy right now is a perfect example of that. The Department of Transportation wants to widen Highway 9, and a section of it in Pope County, in the middle of Pope County. And by doing that, they will be taking a lot of property from, excuse me, this noise is probably coming through on the microphone. This is my dog sitting in my lap. He is bugging me, and he won't leave me alone, but I have to sit here and pet him. So forgive me for the, the sound. But these folks, a lot of folks from, will lose property in the widening of that. And what it also does is it literally paves the way for things like urban sprawl. And we do not want to be, I know this much, we don't want to be Boiling Springs, South Carolina, or Hendersonville, North Carolina, or even Forest City. But it seems to me that this same type of thing happened four years ago on Highway 8 between Columbus and Tryon.
108?
108, excuse me, yeah. 108. And local citizens rose up on that as well, and it was defeated. But it seems to me that the county commissioners could have and should have learned from that, to say, "All right, this has happened once. It can happen again." We've got those two highways, two, the two major highways that are not limited access highways, are Highway 9 and Highway 108. They crisscross the county. They intersect each other roughly in the middle. And if you widen those two highways enough, then regardless of what we want, we have gone down the path of becoming Boiling Springs, South Carolina, or Hendersonville, North Carolina. And I don't think anybody wants that. Well, the county commissioners frankly should have stopped that before it ever happened, because those projects are planned years and years in advance with the Department of Transportation, the Rural Planning Organization, the RPO it's called. And the county commissioners, one of the county commissioners sits on that RPO, and has a vote in those decisions, and has a voice in those decisions. So when they were talking about this, and I assure you they were talking about this several years ago, we had a county commissioner on that board in on those discussions. So in the future, I would love to be that person on that RPO, because if we, if they start talking about maybe widening some of our roads, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to come back and talk to our citizens, the stakeholders, the people who might be affected by that, and say, "Look, this is what we're talking about doing at the RPO. What do you think?" And I think there's another thing that we can do, even more important than that, which is to have, pull together a group of citizens and elected officials locally now. Have that conversation now. What do we want our county to look like? What do we want it to look like five, 10 years from now? And based on that, for example, what do we want the roads to look like? And then we would communicate that to the RPO and to the Department of Transportation, so that those, our wishes are incorporated in their plans, and we're driving our own agenda, rather than having somebody else drive it for us.
Do you think it's a case of the state is coming on in and saying, "We're willing to spend a whole whack of money on your county, improving your roads, so here we go." And it should be easy to say, "Well, okay, we'll take the money, but we don't want it X, we want it Y."
Yeah, it should be easy to do that, but it's not, unfortunately. But you're right, that's exactly the case. That's what they're doing. They're coming in, they're saying, you know, "We've got this money budgeted. We've spent all this money already." They've spent probably $2 million just in planning and engineering and all of that. And they've got the money budgeted to do, and they, and their main reason that they're giving is safety. I don't discount that. I don't say that that's the case. But this citizens group that we've got out there has done just such a wonderful professional job of researching this, and they're showing that there's not an awful lot of, you know, danger on Highway 9 as it is. So that is not a sufficient reason to do that. Plus, you know, whether the DOT or the RPO intends it or not, whether it's an intended consequence or an unintended consequence, by widening that road, like I say, they're literally paving the way for urban sprawl, which is the last thing I think most of us want in Pope County.
I don't think you'll find anybody go on the record saying they want to turn us into Boiling Springs.
Exactly. I'm with you. And so, yes, they've planned it, and it would be nice to be able to say, give us, you know, "We'll take the money, but let us decide where it goes." But that's not how this process works. We have to be, I mean, and they have plenty of expertise over there. So, and I don't discount that either. But the thing that's missing, the part that's missing, is that we don't have the leadership in Pope County to step up and say, "All right, look, folks, let's figure out what we want," and then to communicate that leadership and that vision to the decision makers, and including the member of the county commission, who is part of that decision-making process, so that we're influencing it on the front end and not trying to fight it off on the back end.
You're saying the Board of Commissioners should be able to head off these ideas that really don't have any community support, before they get to the point where we have to hold these emergency public meetings?
Yes. That's exactly what I'm saying. And to do that, they've got to look ahead and plan ahead, and not just react to something that comes in front of them.
Are there any other issues? Because, I mean, we, when I talked with Ray in the previous episode, he also identified Highway 9 as obviously something we have to worry about. What else is on the agenda for you?
Also on the agenda is daycare, childcare. We are the only North Carolina county that does not have a daycare option. Now, I just, I was talking with, yesterday, a hairdresser in Lynn, who is a young mother. She's married. Her husband works third shift. They cannot find daycare. Because of that, she can only work two half-days a week. That's one day a week, because the only days she can work are days that, when her husband is not working, has worked out his shift, and he's available to take care of their 18-month-old child. So, and she went through, and I'm going to post a video about this, of my conversation with her. She went through all the things that she's gone through to try to get childcare. And it's a huge issue. Now, I understand that there is a daycare in Columbus. I haven't had a chance to go over and talk with them yet, but I will. But if that's the case, that's the only one we've got, other than Forbes Preschool, and you have to be three years old or older for that. So it keeps young people from being able to work. It keeps young families from moving here. It drives young families away. It's got to hurt business. That's a, and now, the question is, what can the county commissioners do about it? Maybe nothing. Maybe not much. But maybe nothing from a specific, like, we can't go into the daycare business. But what we can do is we can encourage, we can come up with incentives for people to come in and start businesses. We can, there've got to be some creative ways that we can exercise some leadership in this community, to encourage people to start these types of businesses and stay in business and do a good job at them, because that affects everybody in our community.
There is a movement to, with a lot of support, to bring a YMCA to Pope County, and quite often, Y's supply daycare.
It's going to be a while. I mean, that, that process is in the works, and that's great. But this Crystal, who I was talking with yesterday, she can't work now. She needs daycare now. And it'll be, you know, years before that comes. We have that problem right now. Another thing that's important to me is, is support for our school system. We have an excellent public school system in Pope County. And I think that should not be partisan. The schools should not be partisan at all. They're schools. We remember going, most of us remember going to public schools. My son is a product of the Pope County Public Schools. Our public school system in Pope County consistently ranks number two. This year, we're number three. We slipped to number three. But for years and years, we've been in the top, very few academically performing school systems in the state. And I want to support them, not turn that into one of these cultural, political footballs. And that's one of the things I was disappointed in the county commissioners in. About a year ago, there was this group of people who said, "Hey, we need to make the school board elections partisan. You have to be either a Republican or a Democrat and declare that when you run." And they brought that up to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners said, "Oh, yeah, that sounds great to me, to us." So they voted to make our school board elections partisan. Well, immediately, there was a huge public backlash over that, because no, very few people want our public schools to be partisan politics. And so, at the very next meeting, they backed off. Now, to me, that is not leadership. That's just following whatever the loudest voice is. And I think we need to get away from that.
Well, it almost might seem like it's similar to the Highway 9 issue, in that there are consequences to not paying attention to what's really going on.
That's right.
In the case of the school board, they realized, the more they looked at it, the more problematic partisan elections became. It made it impossible, virtually impossible, for unaffiliateds to run.
Exactly.
And most people are unaffiliated these days.
Yes. Yes. And I think your key phrase there was, "The more they looked at it." And the problem is, they didn't look at it before they voted on it to begin with. And that's, you know, that's part of leadership. So those are the types of things. And, and then the next question becomes, how do you, you know, you're a Democrat. If you get elected, how are you going to work with all those Republicans? I think it's going to be easy as pie, because we're not doing national issues. Partisanship, in my opinion, should stop at the county line. There is no necess, there's no need for us to be partisan in Pope County. These things that I've been talking about, these should not be partisan issues.
Well, and they generally aren't in many places, but the commissioner is a partisan office.
It is, you run as a partisan, you know, as a party, you declare your party when you run, yes. But I don't agree necessarily that that makes it a partisan office, if you choose not to make it partisan.
So you're running as a Democrat, because you have been historically associated with the Democratic Party.
Yes.
And on national, state levels, you would vote Democrat most of the time. But you chose to run as a Democrat in the Board of Commissioners race. And again, is that primarily because it, the hurdle is really too high for unaffiliateds to run?
I'm a Democrat. I mean--
So you're not going to apologize for that?
No, I'm not apologizing for being a Democrat. I'm a Democrat. But frankly, you know, that should not be a disqualifier in local, in Pope County government, because, as I say, these are not Democrat or Republican issues that we're talking about. These are county community issues. And we want, we need to serve our community. So I'm not, I'm not going to allow myself to get dragged into that kind of partisan this or that argument. It's, that's not, that's not what this is about. And I wouldn't want to do it if, if I had to do that. I wouldn't want to get, I wouldn't even want to win if, if that's the way I thought I was going to have to serve out that term.
Well, certainly, when I look at the agenda of a typical Board of Commissioners meeting, I don't see a lot of issues that are vulnerable to partisan debate. They tend to be, you know, potholes and--
Yeah.
Who are you going to hire for this vacancy? Who are we going to appoint to this board? I mean, it's pretty mundane, prosaic stuff. But--
Well, mon, go ahead.
When you open up the floor to public comments, it seems like there is a concerted effort to introduce partisan issues that are driven by national debates.
I'm not sure I completely agree with that. And I would also take slight issue with your, and I'm sure you didn't mean it this way, when you said, sort of mundane type of things. Some of these things are not partisan, but I would not call them at all mundane. For example, this past Monday, just a few days ago, the county commissioners meeting had a, had a presentation from Via Health, who works with low-income folks in Pope County to help, help our, and works with the Health Department and that sort of thing. That's really important. As you say, it might not be really exciting, or something that people get mad at each other over, but that's important. Then they also had a wonderful presentation from Steps to Hope, which is our local nonprofit shelter for, for abused spouses and families. They also had a presentation and approved a grant from the Pope County Recreation Department. They're building a, they're applying for a grant to rebuild the playground at Gibson Park in Columbus. So those are all really important things. And, but none of them are really partisan, like you say. None of them are really partisan. But those are the types of things that, to me, that's all well and good, to have those types of things in the meeting. But then, if that's all you do, you come in, you listen to the things that are presented to you, you vote on those, and then you go home until the next meeting, that's not enough. You, we really need that leadership, that forward-looking, to figure out, what do we want our community to look like, and what can we do proactively now to make it look like that, and continue to keep it the way it is for five, 10, 20 years.
And I'm curious how it came to be that we have five Republican commissioners. I mean, it used to be that Democrats, actually, were the majority not too long ago.
Well--
I mean, a while ago, not too long ago, in the big scheme of things. So things have, have evolved, things have shifted at the local level, according to bigger level trends?
Yes. Yes, it has. But, and, and really, in 2016, sort of the Trump wave kind of blew over our county. Going back in history, 20, 30 years ago, Democrats were the majority. But the parties have shifted a little bit. The communities have shifted a little bit. And now, you know, we have about, probably about 60% of our county votes Republican most of the time, versus 40% voting Democratic, regardless of what party they're affiliated with. And so, yeah, I mean, it has been, I mean, Ray Gasperson was on the commission six years ago, and he's a Democrat. So, I mean, usually, it's a mix of both parties. And it should be a mix of both parties. There should be a little bit of diversity on that board. And I would love to help bring a little bit of that diversity back.
I think you convince enough people to embrace the value of diversity, for diversity's sake, on the board, and maybe cross over from voting party ticket line?
I'm not asking for diversity for diversity's sake. So I'm not asking people to make that decision, to vote for me, just because it'd be something a little bit different, because I've got a different letter after my name than the other people on the board. I think, I think people, if they're going to vote for me, they should vote for me, because they think that I can make a positive difference in their community, and bring some forward thinking to a board that is frankly, a little bit lacking in that.
Well, I'm hoping that I can get some Republican candidates to deal with that claim, because it's, I've certainly heard it before. So thanks for finding the time to talk to me.
Sure.
And--
Sorry for the dog rustling noises.
Well, I'm sure editing software can take care of that. Good luck, and hopefully, we can talk again, whether you're on the board-- Good luck, and hopefully, we can talk again, whether you're on the board or not.
Great. Thank you, James. I appreciate it.
That's it for this episode. Next time, one of the issues that both Andy and Ray raised in their interviews, the future of Highway Nine. Thanks for listening, and as always, you can reach me at jamesh@polklaw.com with your feedback and suggestions.